All right, here we go. Guys, ready? All right, good evening. Welcome to the February 16th, 20...
No, that's not February 16th.
Okay. The March 2nd, 2023, regular meeting of the North Bramford Planning and Zoning Commission. In attendance are alternate member Ponder, Member Lanza, and Member Siena, and I'm Acting Chair Galdenzi. First order of business, we'll do the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So now, under three, we will review the minutes. We couldn't do October 6th or the January ones because we didn't actually have it in our packet last time. So, but we have the 16th, so maybe we'll just go ahead with the 16th. So, the February 16th minutes you all should have, if you want to look them over. Take your time, but when you are done and ready, just kind of give me a quick head nod or gesture. Very good. All right, I just need a motion. Approved or motioned?
Uh, the motion, we approve the minutes of...
February 16th.
February 16th.
Second? All right.
Who got the second?
Lanza, oh, Ponder, okay. Ponder.
Ponder.
Siena. Motioned. Ponder's second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Minutes pass. Maybe just make a note, so when we were trying to do the prior, the October, remember this, we had them in our packet, we didn't have enough. I think we carried it the next meeting, we didn't have enough. And then the last meeting, none of us had the minutes. So, um, maybe if we just...
We'll make sure they're in the packet for the next meeting.
Or send it out, send it out ahead of time, and so we're ready to come and just have, make it a point to review them prior to the meeting next time. So we can expedite that, because we've, I think we've all seen them and generally approve them, but we have to officially approve them. Okay, good. Okay. So, next item is under old business. It's application 2021-1187 Cyril Road, the site plan modification for a hybrid option of two previously approved plans. On applicant Jonathan Denario.
Good evening. We have the revision of the plans that the board requested on the latest revise of 914, adjusting the size to 60 by 80 in the back. I have copies, if I need them.
Yeah. Maybe else for your... Oh, yeah, I think you have them, yeah. Your quick benefit, I mean, I can just summarize it for Member Lanza. So he had an approved, a previously approved, um, site plan for 280 by 100 buildings.
Right, and this one is just to...
Yeah, he just wants to shrink it. And the last meeting, the challenge for us was, they didn't have a site plan that showed the smaller building. So we were just, we wanted to do everything we could, but we just couldn't do it without having a site plan. Yeah, okay, good. That's... Have you, have you seen it?
Yes.
Yeah, you've seen it, yeah. Everything like this.
Yes, and he's, he's done exactly what we've asked him to do. So we have an 80 by 60 building in the back, and again, this is probably going to be phased, that you're going to do the building in the back, and then you're going to do the building in the front.
At some point, yeah.
Right, and you have any idea what the timeframe is for the building in the front?
It's going to depend on the pricing. Right now, um, it just, like I said before, originally, just the cost of that building didn't appraise out from, you know, to get lending, to get finance, so that's why I'm doing this smaller building, and I can get away without financing it.
So is it a two-year window, or a five-year window, or a...
I honestly, um, I honestly couldn't tell you. It truly depends on pricing, because everything is just through the roof.
Will tonight trigger the five-year, because it's, no? Or does it go back to the original approval?
Well, I, I think we, yeah, no, I don't think tonight will trigger anything new for the development of the front building. This is just a modification, so I think the original time limits would stay in place. And I would just say that, you know, the site plan has all sorts of wetland implications, and drainage implications, and pavement implications, and that you're wading into this and just doing the back building as opposed to doing the whole site plan, so that you need to work with staff to make sure that your silt fences are in the right location, your erosion and sediment controls, and that where, you know, if you're not developing the whole thing right away, that at least you're doing it in an environmentally sensitive manner.
Of course. Good. Commission, any further discussion on this? No? Okay. We, yeah, this is, so we, yeah, we need a motion then. Right, we need a motion, yeah.
I think we should make a motion, yeah.
Yep. Can you paraphrase your motion? We don't have a, we don't have something prepared, but maybe just make a motion and just, as long as you use some of that length, you know, reference the, what's that one? The application number, right? Address?
Yeah, I would say that the site plan modification presented to the commission on March 2nd, 2023, as on the plan stated, modification approval, March 2nd, 2023, be approved.
Okay. I motion, we accept the modified site plans for the hybrid option on 87 Cyril Road, application 2021-11, dash, no, it shouldn't be dash, 87, mistake on my part here, sorry. And, uh, the applicant Jonathan Denario?
Yes.
As indicated on map, right?
Right, and I, I just dated it here, so...
Site plan dated what?
Received at the meeting on March 2nd, 2023, undated. Maybe we should have you sign one of those site plans and put your John Hancock on it. So we have an official document.
So do you have that motion?
Well, I thought you did very well.
Yeah, thank you, John. You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye, okay. Thanks for your patience, appreciate it.
Of course, thank you.
Yeah. Good job, Ron.
Yeah, I was trying to find something.
It's called agility, right?
Mom and we.
Yeah. All right. Next order of business, under new business, five, is a referral from the zoning board of appeals for 1405 Middletown Avenue, Northford Store, a use variance for beer and grocery store permit.
So I guess maybe I should just elaborate. I have, there's a memo to you from, from me, um, and I, I think the third paragraph of the memo is the important thing that says, zoning regulation 61.4 requires the ZBA to request a report, in quotation marks, with recommendations in regard to the variance request from the planning and zoning commission. If no report is issued, then the ZBA must wait at least 20 days after a copy of the application is received by the commission before voting on the application. The ZBA opened the public hearing on this application on February 27th, and will wait until the next meeting to vote on the application in order to receive the report. So, report...
Yeah.
Is in quotation marks, because what is a report? We do A24 reports. It's basically a chance for you, as the commission, to give some recommendations to the zoning board of appeals as to how you feel about them varying a use regulation. So this is not a setback regulation, it's not a street frontage, it's not a bulk regulation. So in this case, they're requesting that the, um, Northford Country Store be allowed to sell beer within 400 feet of a church. The regulation says you can't be close in 500 feet unless it's divided by a state highway, in which case it can be 400 feet, and in this case, it's about 300 feet, 295 feet, somewhere in that.
Separated by a state highway.
Well, it's under 400 feet, clearly. So I, I did draft a quick report, putting words in your mouth. I'm not sure what a report means. And you have the choice to just not say anything and wait 20 days.
Do we have any influence either way?
No.
Or it's the, okay, so the zoning, it's the zoning board of appeals who can say yea or nay, not us anywhere?
Correct.
We can give our opinions to them, how we feel, okay?
That's what the regulations that you drafted suggest.
Yep, okay.
So there may be some uses that are so odorous that they shouldn't be anywhere, and there are other uses that may be practically in the face of the zoning regulations are not odorous.
All right, I, I would, I prefer like we have a discussion about this and not just...
I've been banging my head on this one, trying to think about... Is the Northford Country Store the same thing as the Northford Store that existed for 100-plus years?
I'll let the applicant speak to that.
If you do, yeah, name and address.
So, for the record, my name is Michael Bajoye, 1405 Middletown Avenue. I'm here in a representative capacity for 1405 Middletown Avenue, also known as the Northford Store. Thank you, members of the commission and Mr. Planner, for being here this evening. So, to answer the question, yes, the owner of, the previous owner of the Northford Store, prior to its burning to the ground, actually, I actually contracted with myself to design and rebuild the store. We, we were approached to become a partner, a silent partner in, in the store. That partnership ceased to exist anymore, and my father Mario, who is out of town right now, cannot be here this evening. So, to answer your question, yes, it is the, it is the same store. We were able to go back into state records and find that there was, in fact, a beer sales grocery store permit in place for many, many years. However, in 2003, if I'm not mistaken, 2003, the state went to all digital records, and the records prior to 2003 were lost. In 2004, the previous owner, um, let that license lapse, and we are here before you this evening from a referral based from, from the ZBA, asking for you guys, for this commission to opine upon some technicalities within the zoning regulations. We feel that the, uh, this, this variance and the permit is vital to the survivability of what I would argue is probably the biggest landmark in Northford Center. And more so, uh, my personal interpretation of the zoning regulations is, being that the distance requirement is reduced by 100 feet when you cross a state highway, the, technically, the Northford Store is in a unique position in town where it actually crosses two state highways, so the argument could also be made that it can be reduced by 200 feet, in which case, um, no variance would be needed. However, if you go to the Town GIS map, it hasn't been updated. The old location and the old footprint of the building still exists, so if you were to measure from, per the regulations, I believe it's building corner to building corner, we're at 303.63 feet, to be exact. And so, I apologize, that was a long answer to your short question. Yes, the Northford Country Store is the Northford Store.
Good background, yes.
But where I was going with that was, the, the list of owners goes, you know, Beck, Paul Hints, Louis Como, the Johnson Brothers. I moved a house next door from the Northford Store in 1972, '73. So I was wondering, if they had the permit back then, wouldn't they just be grandfathered in?
He just said it, he just described what happened.
Yeah, even though it lapses, but is it still grandfathered?
Well, it's a state permit. This is a zoning, we're talking, this is zoning, that's a state permit.
Correct, so...
It's two different things.
I want to say it's, it's the town zoning regulations, if it lapses for a year, it's as if it never existed, despite what other, you know, what has previously existed. And I believe that, is that, is that state, or that's, that's town?
That's a local zoning regulation.
It's a local zoning regulation, so if, even if we were to be able to, you know, if we were granted a variance, um, this year, and we had it for a year, let it lapse for one year, it would be as if it never occurred, according to the regulations in this.
Do you know if you can, doesn't the state limit the number of liquor permits for liquor stores in a town? I thought we're already maxed out. I mean, you would know that better than me.
I don't believe that's true.
The, the state limits the number of package stores.
Oh, package stores, right.
Correct, this is a, this is a different permit, and correct me if I'm wrong, this is part of the issue, because it's, a liquor outlet is a little bit different than a grocery store permit, that says beer only and...
That's helpful. I mean, that's actually...
Not single service.
It's not like you're selling, yeah.
Right.
It's only, it's only beer.
It's only, it's only beer.
Grocery store beer.
Like, like, yeah, okay.
And simply to provide a convenience that, I'm, I'm not there every day, my father Mario was there every day, and it's simply convenience, people ask for it every single day, it's just a simple convenience. And that's why we're here before you.
So any other discuss, I mean, we don't really, we're not, we're just, we're reporting it. So, yeah, but I always, I appreciate your background, because I just, I wanted to understand a little bit more.
Sure. I really like the plot twist where you go over two highways.
Yeah, that's interesting.
I like that a lot.
Yeah, but it's true, though. The church is on the hill, so you literally have to cross them both.
Correct.
But historically, the Northford Store sold beer before going through multiple owners.
And not, not to interrupt, there was, there was a gentleman testified at ZBA that he's been living in town for, I think, over 80 years, and he remembers as a little boy having his dad stop there with him, and he's buying his beer there. Unfortunately, in 2003, when they switched over, there's no record of it previous to 2003.
Yes, there were also two gasoline pumps in the front of the Northford Store.
I know, I found the tanks when we built the store.
And there was a piano on the third floor. I still can't figure out how to get a heavy piano up to the third floor of the old Northford Store. Ron, did they hire you?
Yeah. So do we have to, do we have, do we review, do we have to review that, or just...
Review what?
Your, your report, you said you had a report.
I, I think I gave you a copy of the report.
Oh, this, oh, your, your report, I'm sorry.
Correct.
Oh, this, this, this is what you said?
No, there's just this, I gave you a...
Oh, that, I'm so, yeah, I got it.
There was, there was further discussion from the zoning board of appeals, because I did not give them the whole section 54, and I just gave them the 54.4.1 that talked about no liquor outlet, and they were very confused as to how a beer outlet could be considered a liquor outlet. But clearly, in the 54.1, the prologue, it says, "The following regulations shall apply to the location of any business where alcoholic liquor, wine, beer, and/or ale is sold," blah, 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 "which hereafter shall be known as a liquor outlet." So, it's pretty clear in 54.1 that a liquor outlet is everything.
We, we don't need to say anything, right?
We don't, no, you can say nothing.
You can say nothing, okay.
But wouldn't that definition of a liquor outlet be that they sell solely alcoholic products and not a grocery store that, that sells beer? I mean, it can't be a liquor outlet and also have, has a iceberg lettuce on the shelf.
Say that again.
Well, he sells produce, too. I mean, his, his business is primarily grocery, this is...
Well, it says, "The following regulations shall apply to the location of any business where beer is sold at retail for consumption," is a liquor outlet. So whether it's accessory to a grocery store is...
Right.
If, if I may, can I just raise a question? Isn't there a distance requirement between something like a grocery store beer outlet versus an actual, a true liquor outlet, meaning a grocery store and a package store, correct?
The, the regulation is that they cannot be within 1,500 feet of an establishment with the same class permit.
Correct, so, in, in, in my view, and I'm, I'm no expert on your, your town regulations, but when you look at Big Y with an actual package store right next door, wouldn't that delineation have been met when they appeared before ZBA, if they even had to?
Well, they're not the same class permit. One's a grocery store permit, and one's a package store permit. They're totally different classes, so...
Right, but there's not 1,500 feet separation between them, right?
That's what I'm saying, they don't need to have 1,500 feet.
Okay.
Follow?
Yes.
Yes, any further comment? I, I don't know that we need to say anything, because, I mean...
I don't think...
I think we, um, I don't think we need to say anything, and ZBA, ZBA is the sides.
Right, ZBA has some...
We don't have any influence over it, so... Any thoughts on this?
No, I mean, I don't think our word would go too far anyway, they're going to listen to the bill and then take their decision. I think, having looked at how long the store's been there and the history, and he spoke about the survivability, and a recent study, I've researched, the studies on what just selling beer at like a, like a store like that would do, I mean, it could increase their revenue by 200% in the manner of, so, yeah, I mean, I would say, would be wise to let them review it and say, say what they think.
Yeah, well, the, the, ZBA is going to review it and...
Yeah, because, to pick up on that, the comment, the, the town, at the Poco Festival, sells beer, and that's on town property, which is a park. So technically...
I don't know. It's just, this is a theory.
I think we leave this to the ZBA.
Yeah, no, I, I, it has to go to the ZBA, so we don't really have any influence on it, so... Okay?
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah?
Thank you.
Thanks, good luck.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So you got to choose not to issue a report on it?
I think that's what I'm saying.
There's really nothing to report on. There's really nothing to report on from that standpoint.
Okay.
And the ZBA hasn't made a decision yet.
So they're waiting, they're ready.
No, they have one, 20 days.
They're waiting for you. Come here in 20 days, yeah, so... So, the 27th of, is their meeting, so whatever that turns out, 18th, 17th, whatever the next meeting is. Okay, good.
Moving right along.
Uh, any other, other business, zoning regulation updates?
I sent out some draft cannabis regulations for your review from, I believe they were from Stafford, which is where I worked before. We have until October to deal with cannabis regulations, so again, you guys need to sort of decide upfront whether you want to allow them...
Can I, so, when Tom, our Tom Council rep was here last time, I, I asked him, personally, I, I don't have, I don't care either way, to be honest, but I, I feel it, I feel it should be beyond the four of us, like, is that something the town wants us to pursue?
Well, if you're going to, if you're going to do it as a regulation change, you're going to need a public hearing.
Yeah. Yeah, but like in, for other types of regulations that were, did not exist, it usually waited to someone had it, someone, like a business, needed it and had it, you know, maybe they would bring the, mend the zoning, proposed zoning changes for a new regulation to us and things like that.
Well, then you have a...
Is there a desire on anyone's part to, to start working on this now? I just, I don't know where the motivation for this is coming from.
I have, I have no push to it, other than we have an October deadline, and we should be talking about it.
Yeah, I don't care either way, it just, it will be, it's going to be a lot of work, it'll be, it'll, it could be large public hearings, and if there's no, if there's no push to do this, for me, it almost seems senseless. If there's nobody looking to do this...
Well, we could just, we could just keep the moratorium in effect and keep pushing it down.
This is my opinion, I'm just trying to understand what's driving it, and I know October's driving it, I guess, from your perspective, but I, I feel like there's, for me, there's just a disconnect with the town council and the community, like, is this something we should be, most looking for like, direction from the town, like, does the town want us to spend a lot of time on this and develop regulations?
So should we do, should we do a, a...
This is just, I, I'm just one person, I'm just, I don't know how the people feel about it.
I think for, right now, before it gets to the point to like what you're saying, if there's a desire, if there's a push for it, just like the town council did, treat it as though it were alcohol, as far as regulations and zoning is. It can't be so however many feet from a park, it can't be however many from a school, you know, set that ground rule, and then when somebody wants to buy 100 acres of land and grow a bunch of plants, we talk about that regulation.
So we could have that.
Yeah, I, I tend to agree with Dave, we got to kind of get ahead of it a little bit, because if someone puts an application in, the clock starts ticking, whereas, right now, there's no clock, and we can read the draft and think about it.
We don't have a regulation, so there's no application they can put in. If someone... If someone wanted to come, they would have to come here and say, "I want to produce a reg," like we did the farm wineries and the farm breweries, or Alex had to create the regulation, and we worked with them to create the regulation. So no one can bring an application, and we don't have an app. So this is, this would, and I'm okay with it, just it's going to, it's a lot of work, and I don't know, you know, how urgent this is.
Right, where do you start?
Yeah. I mean, you have a pretty good regulation there, it seems, so.
Well, I mean, it's, you know, it goes pretty much to the alcohol regulation, how far away do you want to have it from churches and schools, and, and, you know, I think it's a little bit trickier in North Branford for the growers, because you don't really, you need a large, large facility for growing.
Yeah.
And we don't really have a lot of industrial space for growing.
Oh, because it's indoor.
And if you allow it, you know, as an outdoor operation, then it's going to be in a residential zone, and so what sort of acreage are you going to require them to have? I mean, I think it's a little trickier on the growing side than the dispensary side. I mean, I think the dispensary side is, is pretty, you know, it's basically a drugstore.
Right, it's just a pharmacy.
Yeah. You know, you have some traffic issues when they first start up, but I think we're done with that.
Yeah.
And whether we're, we're an attractive place for a dispensary, you know, we're not right on an interstate. They want to be on an interstate, they like to be an old bank where they have a vault and they have security.
Right, when was the last time we talked about a dispensary? It was the old Tony Z's building before Mr. Bezuto bought it, but then the issue was the park across the street. Yeah. And that was, and then we put another moratorium, so we have a moratorium until October.
Yeah, but we can just not, you know, we can just not permit it, and then if somebody wants to show up and say, "It's time to permit it," we can look at it.
Yeah, I was simply looking at it as, I didn't know if there was any urgency and if there was any, if there's a desire.
I'm not.
I guess, I guess, I'm drawing an analogy to like when the farmers came with the farm winery and farm brewery, they had a vested interest, they came, they worked with us, they reproduced regulation, kind of collaboratively, you know, like we didn't, we didn't like on our own produce something and then they came, so. I'm not saying that's the way to do it, I'm just saying, I just don't know, I didn't know if there was some other motivation, and I'm really curious how the town council feels about it. Personally, personally for me, I feel like if the town is like, we think this would be good for economic growth and stuff, and can you guys, you know, work on a regulation, you know, give us some direction that way. Otherwise, it's just, it's four people deciding for the town, that's the way we want to head. It seems a little disconnected to me, from the greater community. This is a big community issue, not four people sitting at this table. For me, that's my personal opinion. But that's my opinion.
That's all, I just wanted to have a chat.
Yeah, yeah, no. Well, I mean, nothing happens till October anyway, so there is no urgency. So maybe, maybe when we have the full Trish and Charles here, we can discuss it again. I don't know if you maybe want to talk, can you talk to the town manager and give at least my opinion? At least one person was saying, you know, how does the town feel about it?
Well, I mean, there is some good tax income from.
Yeah. No, for sure, yeah.
Can we put regulations on a dispensary?
You can do whatever you want, allow a dispensary and not a grower, and, you know, you can see that list, there's like a list of twelve or thirteen different functions. You could have just a transporter, you could allow a transporter, who's simply going out and picking up from the grower and taking it to the dispensary, and he has a place of residence in your town.
We worked on, remember, we worked on medical?
Right.
We worked on a dispensary and production, commercial production and dispensary.
You know, what I understand, going backwards, technically, to be a dispensary, all you have to do is take an eight-hour course with the state. I mean, I have no background in this. If I take, if I take the eight-hour course with the state, you know, it's like getting a voting license, that I can open a dispensary and dispense medical marijuana without any background in, or knowledge of what I'm selling.
Not the state, though. Yeah, it's the state. Is, I mean, that's my opinion, maybe, maybe it makes sense just to have the full commission and we can revisit it.
Yeah, I think more, more opinions would be better.
Maybe if we can just get some kind of indication from the town manager, like, yeah, that makes sense, you know, to your point, it's tax, you know, yeah, go ahead and at least have the regulation in place, and feel a little better like it's.
Yes, but I also like, you know, just keep going over this, because the more you read it, you come up with additional, you know, thoughts or questions, and at least, at least you're thinking about it, and that's long-term, as opposed to, hey, I got a week and a half to put together a document that's going to be there forever.
Plus, you know, it'll obviously go to a public hearing in that way.
But you're also right about seven to fourteen.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, Charles and Trish should be here, I think. If we, if we're going to make a decision, we're going to move ahead, because it's a lot of, it would be work.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, which is fine. We're here to work.
Let the town council do the, do the why part.
Yeah.
We'll figure out the where.
Yeah, exactly, that's a good point, that's a good way to end, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, good, okay, good. Okay.
So the one other one I'd like to talk about with zoning regulations is I had a request recently for somebody who would like to create a solar field. We have no solar regulations in North Branford, so if it's not permitted, it's prohibited.
Unless it comes from the Connecticut City Council.
Unless it comes from the Connecticut City Council.
Then we don't have anything to say about it.
Then you have nothing to say about it.
We just say, okay, like that one.
You threw salt on a sore plane with me. We have a regulation about no power plants, right? Now, a solar farm produces what? Not cabbages.
I think it says public power plant, no?
You got me there, I'm not sure.
I'm not sure, but, yeah, so I'll look at that.
So this is a solar farm, but not through the Connecticut City Council, obviously?
Correct.
This is someone that's going to do it, okay.
But it's, it's what I would consider large, it's seventy kilowatts or seven hundred kilowatts, it's under a mag, so it's definitely in our jurisdiction, and right now, it's not permitted, so it's prohibited. So I'm just basically going to tell him that it's not permitted, it's prohibited, and if he'd like to come and change the regulation or discuss it with the commission, that would be fine.
Bring proposed regulation? I mean, that's typically, I'm not saying that's the way it has to be, no, we have done several things that way. If someone has a, unless, unless like, if it's something highly desirable for us and we want to go after proactively, then yeah.
On the other hand, the, our plan of conservation development talks about solar energy and renewable energy, and the state's plan talks about, you know, cutting, cutting stuff going into the air by twenty thirty, and, and, you know, it would be in our best interest to craft a policy to cut down for emissions. So we can choose to be proactive or reactive. That's your choice.
So you'll go back to them, at least say currently, we, our regulations don't allow it, and then we could maybe have, you could have a conversation with that, that means?
Correct.
If they want to pursue something, it might be helpful, because they kind of bring some of the language, you know?
Right.
Okay, good.
Can I ask where this is proposed? Without actually being proposed?
For a rough area?
What is it, West Pond Road? Over by, is that a road in town, West Pond Road?
Yeah, it's across from a couple of farms, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just past Zero, just past Zero Road. And there are lots of different solar regulations around the state that are really liberal and other ones that are really conservative, and you run, you run the gamut.
Yeah, right.
Okay, good. Anything else under other business?
That's it for me.
Okay, how about under Tom Planner's report?
I have no report.
You have any application for the sixteenth?
No.
No? Keep an eye on that. Anyone going, is, am I the only one going to this?
Bob's going.
Oh, Bob's going, okay.
I'm going.
What is it? It's that town land use law course, under eleven, Saturday. Come on over, I'll have it on my big screen. It's on virtual.
Oh, well, it's going to be challenging.
Okay, so we're good? I think we're good. Item eight. We all set then?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Moving on the, down the agenda, item eight, I motion adjourn.
All right, second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? All right, we adjourn at eight twenty-two.
Seven.